Why do you?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, thank you for bringing us here tonight. Please guide us in making the best decisions for our citizens and the community of Goddard. Amen.
All right. Taking what's approved agenda with an exception of E, adding an E two for recognition to city staff member. Should I have a motion to add a C?
I will make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, all, favor I?
Aye.
Both? All right, we'll move to citizens' comments. Is there anyone here that would like to address the council or state a good word or a complaint, one of the two? If not, we'll close citizens' comments. We'll move on to E one, reappointment of planning commission members.
Thank you. Honorable mayor and city council, this is I, E one. Background, planning commission operates on a three-year term basis with one-third of the planning commissioners being reappointed each year. The mayor appoints the commissioners to office and they are confirmed by the governing body. Doug Hall and Justin Parks requested reappointment to another three-year term. Mayor's amendment with both planning commissioners recommends that they be reappointed for that three-year term. This is Doug Hall and Justin Parks. Doug Hall is a citizen of the city and Justin Parks is one of the two that requires to be outside city limits per state law. So this is the biology of Article one for officers. The commissioner shall organize and annulate the first regular meeting after the annual appointment of new members, which is going on their first city council in December. Commissioners appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council for a term of three calendar years on staggered basis approximately one-third of the commission, the commission reappointed each year. So they're being reappointed if it is decided by city council. This would be their first start of the new term and then we go into 2024 and then in 2025 and then they'd be reappointed again in December 2025. Financially, not legally approved as a form, and is recommended city council approve the mayor's decision to renew the three-year term of Commissioner Hall and Commissioner Parks.
Motion to add a C?
I'll make a motion to approve the mayor's decision.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Okay, aye?
Aye.
Both? Okay, thank you. I'm going to E two.
Honorable everybody, this is an addition. I'm sure Brian doesn't want me to say anything, but I'm going to brag on him a little bit anyways. So Brian was recently awarded last week the Beaufort M. Watson Jr. Award for Excellence in his Field at the Kansas Association of City County Management Conference. So this award is given each year by KACM to a local government manager. It was displayed attributes of the late Beaufort M. Watson Jr., a former city manager of Lawrence, Kansas. That includes serving as a role model in dealing with constituents, valuing customer satisfaction, and encouraging new members of the profession. So Brian served as a city manager since 2008, previously serving as a city manager of Osage, Sterling, and working for the city of Wichita. He's also a former firefighter and served time in the armed forces. And, you know, I know Brian came here in 2008. He was, there was no manager, from what I understand, for around 20 years. And I think it's pretty obvious that Goddard looks quite a bit different than it did back then, and I think that's due to Brian's leadership and cooperation with the public and various governing bodies throughout the years. I think Brian's been a great leader, mentor, and friend even to me and various others who have worked for the city. This can be a difficult, stressful job. It's hard to please 5,000 people. And I often see the long hours and weekends and evenings that Brian's spending on the phone or replying to emails or at these city council meetings. So I think we as staff appreciate Brian's hard work and dedication, working with the council, staff, and community to move the city forward in a smart and effective way. And I think this is probably the best I've seen the city operate since I've been here, and I think that's a credit to Brian's leadership and his ability to hire and retain a good team. So congratulations to Brian.
Thank you, and it's only because we've had an excellent team, both elected officials, city staff, and dedicated community members who move it forward. And I'm just a vital point between all of those entities and coordinating city staff. So I'm only where I'm at because I've been blessed to work in communities that have had that mixture. So it's a privilege to serve. Thank you.
Well, I can simply say from experience that you don't want to be without a city manager, because you don't want five council members running around micromanaging every department, which wasn't the case before we got here. And that didn't work out real well. And so we appreciate Brian and his efforts to make things run smooth in the city and hope he continues to show interest in being part of us. Thank you, Brian. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda and then we move on to, I guess, did we approve the consent agenda already?
No. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion is your second? Motion second, in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both? I guess I got carried away in the moment there. All right, under new business, we collect, conduct a public hearing for the proposed taxable industrial revenue bonds for Goddard Sports LLC in a principal amount not to exceed 68,000, but that got changed here.
Yes, sir. And what we'll do is we'll have a public hearing, solicit any public comments, close the public hearing, and then we will be republishing a notice of public hearing at the higher amount of 76 million in the December 8 edition of the Times Sentinel, and that public hearing will occur at the next regular city council meeting on December 19, immediately prior to consideration of an ordinance for the industrial revenue bond. And this is kind of a background of the project, starting with the district approval, which is in January of 2013, and then just kind of walking through all of the various iterations, including the five development agreement amendments. Notice was published in the November 24, 2022 Times Sentinel to conduct a public hearing to increase the IRB authorization amount to, not to exceed 68 million in aggregate principal. Literally late this afternoon, early this evening, we received information that the verification for expenditures has gone to 76 million, so this will necessitate a new public hearing at the December 19 regular city council meeting. There will be a small publication, cost associated with the advertisement of this, and the notice has been authored by city bond counsel Kevin Callen and reviewed by city attorney Ryan Peck, who approves this to form. So it's recommended that, as the notice was previously published, to conduct the public hearing in regard to the issuance of taxable industrial revenue bonds for Goddard Sports LLC in a principal amount not to exceed 68 million, which was published, as well as to include an abdolorum tax exemption on property constructed or purchased with the IRB proceeds in accordance with the IRB statute 12-1740 at SEC. So all that's required is the mayor to open the public hearing to receive any comments, and then upon the conclusion of public comments, close the public hearing, and we can move on to the next agenda, item H two.
All right, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to address the city council regarding the IRBs? I guess the only question I have, Kevin, is it just because of the additional things that he did in the, in the making of the complex?
Yes, yes. And the $68 million figure was relatively recent. And then when we were gathering information for the cost benefit analysis and update, which was more detailed and required them to provide really some breakouts of what they spent, it totaled something closer to 76 million.
All right. Is there nobody else that would like to address the council? I guess we'll close this public here. Hello? Do I need a motion to that or?
No, sir. Item H two is consider a resolution amending and supplementing resolutions 18-13, resolution 20-17, and resolution 22-21, which determine the advisability of issuing industrial revenue bonds for the purpose of financing the acquisition, construction, furnishing, and equipping of a multi-sport athletic complex and other commercial facilities. It's very similar to the slide that you saw in the last item, all of the council action item dates beginning in January of 2013 and progressing down to resolution 22-21, which extended the IRB issuance date to December 31, 2022. This increases the cell authorization amount and not to exceed, well, I changed that to 76 million, and that's in your amended packet, so I don't know why, but anyway, that's in an amount not to exceed 76 million, and we'll have an ordinance to present at the December 19, 2022 ordinance. There's no direct cost from the passage of the resolution. It was authored by city bond counsel Kevin Callen and reviewed by our city attorney Ryan Peck, who approves this to form. It's recommended that the council adopt the proposed resolution amending and supplementing resolutions 18, 13, 2017, and 22, 21 for the purposes of financing the acquisition, construction, furnishing, and equipping of a multi-sport athletic complex and other commercial facilities in an amount not to exceed 76 million. And that can be done with a vote.
All right, do we have a motion to? Do you need a recommendation of H two?
I will make a motion as presented here for up to 76 million.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? In favor, aye?
Aye.
Both?
Item H three is the consideration of an agreement for payment in lieu of general abdolorum property taxes for the issuance of a taxable industrial revenue bond, series 2022-A, in the principal amount of $76 million to Goddard Sports LLC. Again, same slide on this item with all of the previous council action items from January of 2013 to September of 2022. On November 7, the city council approved the property tax abatement for the Starbond facilities to include the ball field, sand sports complex, parking spaces for those facilities. You had finalizing a plat, identifying the parcels with pin numbers for each of the phases, as well as a pilot agreement to be presented at this council meeting. At the previous council meeting in November, you approved that final plat that we were able to utilize for the construction of the pilot agreement with reference to the lot block numbers, and we have an increase in that principal amount to 76 million, which is within the fiscal impact model parameters conducted by the Center for Economic Development and Business Research at Wichita State. General description of the abatement process is essentially the city's abating the entirety of the parcels owned by Goddard Sports, with Goddard Sports making a payment in lieu of taxes or a pilot on the parcels covered in the agreement, which in this case, and I'll have a map forthcoming, of lots one and four, block A. The lots owned by separate corporate entities or individuals will continue to pay property taxes as usual and are not subject to an abatement or a payment in lieu of. There will be, at this time, two series of issuances to reflect the abatement and the pilot, as there are currently two separate corporate entities within the project. Series 22A will address the Starbond improvements constructed by Goddard Sports, and that addresses lot A, block, I'm sorry, block A, lot one, and the water park, which is block A, lot four. Series 2022B will cover the hotel constructed by Goddard Destination Hotel. The remaining out parcels are part of the original Goddard Aquatic Center and are not subject to the industrial revenue bonds or the abatement. And what you have here is the hotel, which is not subject to, and is owned by Goddard Destination Hotel. Then you have lot A, I'm sorry, block A, lot one, and block A, lot four. These two parcels here are the two parcels with which the payment in lieu of is being made. All of the remaining parcels, lots three, six, and five, are addressed in the second phase and will be covered in a subsequent, well, these are what's being abated, and then for the remainder of the sand sports complex, there'll be a subsequent issuance. And you'll notice these parcels here, those are what's in the Goddard Aquatic Center edition in the first plat that's not covered in any way, shape, or form by this agreement. Principal amount, 76 million, with an IRB issuance forthcoming for the sand sports complex, the pilots for lots one and four, block A, at 100% of the property taxes owed for fiscal years 2023 through 2032. Should a future exemption in use or exemption from, say, a legislative act occur, the pilot will continue at the amount equal to the previous payment for the duration of the agreement. So if there was a change in use for privately-owned health clubs to be abated, there'll still be a payment in lieu of, as the city's made infrastructure investments, and this will help cash flow that principal and interest payments on, on that issuance. And then failure to pay property taxes or the pilot by the 20th of December of the year of payments due results in the full and regular amount of property taxes being received and essentially the nullification of the abatement. And then, again, this shows that there is a 644% ROI over the project, and is estimated to generate more than 188 million in payroll over this 10-year period. And the pilot was authored by Kevin Callen in consultation with the developer's attorney and reviewed by city attorney Ryan Peck, who approves this to form. It's recommended that if there are no questions for either of the attorneys or myself, that the council authorize the mayor to sign the agreement for the payment in lieu of general abdolorum property taxes for the issuance of taxable industrial revenue bond, series 2022-A, in the principal amount of 76 million with Goddard Sports LLC.
Does that mean after 10 years, they go to full taxation then?
That is, yes, under current law, and Brian referenced one of the points that we wanted to have in this, which is even during the 10 years, if the law changes and property that would otherwise be taxable becomes exempt, like a health club, that under this agreement, you still have to continue to make a payment in lieu of taxes. But once we get past the 10 years, we wouldn't have any control over that. So whatever the status of the law is after 10 years, if the property is otherwise subject to taxation, it's going to be paying property taxes, and the bonds will no longer have any impact on whether they can be exempt property.
When does the Starbond set to pay off? How many years is it?
I would say 2030.
Long, 10 years, right?
2032 at the latest.
So it's already passed. I mean, whose old bag is it?
Well, the Starbonds are payable from sales tax, right? Those would probably be status quo, kind of as they have operated the last number of years. The city's made some infrastructure commitments and financed those, and that's really what we're, we're talking about, so.
Right, that's, I mean.
Right. And initially, correct, and again, without having a total build-out, they can't give you a firm number, but that should be sufficient to cash flow. We may have additional, well, with respect to, say, the sports complex to the south and the restaurant, sports bar, that complex should help offset that payment in lieu of which we.
If we were to lose.
So we would, we should come out ahead at the end, but again, if there's a change at the legislative level, we, we could be cut short. That's absolutely.
The city?
Yeah.
And not the state?
Because the Starbonds would be paid off. Now, if you look at the property taxes generated completely within that district, then, you know, in a TIF-like manner, as we've been operating it, then we'll be covered. But again, the whole intention always was for the western half of that district to be able to cash flow the city's infrastructure. And, and there was discussion at the time when the city was participating, and we were assured that that was not being pursued, if you remember at that time, so.
So it is somewhat of a risk.
It is a risk.
Mayor, what do you think about that? Do you want to take that risk?
Well, we've taken a lot of risks before.
Well, and this is, this is in, in the development agreement.
Okay. So do we have a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement?
I'll make the motion for the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second.
Second, any discussion? In favor, aye?
Aye.
Both?
Evening, all of our council. H four is a sludge contract renewal. The wastewater sludge is a semi-solid byproduct of the wastewater treatment process. It's made up of the bio solids that are not consumed by the process when the bugs, whatever the bugs don't eat. And it's, it has to be disposed of according to regulations set forth by KDHE and the U.S. Department of, U.S. EPA. Goddard's wastewater sludge is currently disposed by applying to dry product agricultural fields to use as a fertilizer. City contracts with Agro Environmental Services, LAC, from here on called an Agro Environmental, Cedric, Kansas, for removal and application of sludge. The agreement states that Agro will haul and spread up to 50, 150 tons of sludge annually at a fixed cost of $2,500 per month. That contract has expired, and Agro Environ has proposed a new agreement that prices us more consistent with the fees that are being paid by other cities in the metro area. The proposed contract will cover the removal, transport, disposal of bio solids produced by the city's plant. They have offered three different contract options for considerations. Details of each option are listed on the following slides. Option A is a five-year contract with price increase after the second year. As you can see here, years one and two, it price rises to $5,250 per month, or $63,000 annually for both years one and two. Year three, it would go to 5,565 per month, which is a 6% increase over the previous year, and $66,780 annually. We get a 10% increase for year four to $6,12150 per month, and a 10% increase for year five as well to $673365 per month. The five-year cost of option A total is $347,042. Option B is a three-year contract with an annual price increase after the first year. Year one will be the same, $5,250 per month. Year two increases to $5775 per month, which I believe is also 6%, and I didn't put that up, my apology. And year three, it increases to $663250 per month, which is a 6% increase over year two. Total cost of that year contract over the three-year term would be $208,290. Now, the final option is option C, which is a one-year contract with a flat rate of $5,800 per month. The total cost of that contract is $69,600 for that one year of service. Now, these prices are allocated based on 150 wet tons per calendar year. Additional tons produced will be hauled at a rate of $10 per ton on top of the monthly base cost. We're not concerned with additional, with additional over 180. We're not meeting 150 now. We haven't yet, and we really don't think in the, if we were to go to the five years, I don't think we would hit the 180 over the term of that five years. So we're pretty safe with that number. Agro Environ provides an onsite truck or trailer that we park in our bay that collects all these sludge as we produce it, and they own and maintain that. They, they insure that truck. They come and pick that truck up, replace it with another, take it to the field and apply it. They do all the soil sampling. They do all the dealing with KDHE as far as, as the regs on the, on what ground they're putting it on and whether that, that property is approved or not. Like I said before, they propose these, these price increases to match those paid by other cities in Wichita, Wichita metro area, and the cost increase is dependent on the option exercised. Now, I, staff is recommending a multi-year option because that gives us time if we choose to do something down the road that we are getting our sludge adequate, we disposed of until that time. So really, it's up to council's, council's decision whether we'd like to use option A, the five-year agreement, to a cost of $347,042, the B, the three-year agreement for $208,290, or a option C, a one-year agreement with a cost of $69,600. Any questions?
How long did we have that other contract?
This is the same contract that we've had since the plan's been out.
Right, but I'm saying, how many years did we have it, and was it locked in at that 2,500?
No, we were doing, we were, we, we, yes, it's been 2,500 for a long time, and when I came on, the contracts, contract had lapsed, and we were basically doing it one month a month, and we'd been doing that for a while now too, because he was, he had came in and told me that he wanted to raise our prices and meet those that he's getting paid by other, other cities. And so in that timeframe, when he was having his lawyer put this together, we just did a month a month.
Okay.
We were getting a really, really good deal before.
Yeah, I was going to say, it more than doubled.
And I really still think this is a fair deal for both of us. We just aren't getting a really good deal. We just aren't getting a really good deal, unfortunately. This, the cost, the financials, the cost of this would be in the, including the annual wastewater treatment budget, under thirty-eight-sixty-six-forty. The contract was reviewed and approved by Robert Quicken doll. So really, just we decide what, council decides how, how long of an agreement that you would like to enter into.
Were there any other services that are offered to do this contract?
Other, other companies?
Other providers?
Not that will move our sludge the way we are doing it now. Other companies would want us to change over to liquid sludge, which require a large holding tank and a different setup other than the press, the belt press that we have. So that would cost capital dollars there, so that really didn't seem like it'd be a good idea. The other, other options that I'd looked at, they want us to pile up a year's worth of sludge, find the land to apply it on, buy the equipment and pay them to come and apply it. Yeah, that doesn't make any sense to me either. If we were gonna do that, we would apply it. And to, to do that would require a much larger tractor, a more, an agricultural tractor, much larger than what we have. Our John Deere wouldn't pull it, and of course, our Becco doesn't, isn't designed for that. It would require a spreader, and it would require, every application would require about nineteen acres of property that we would have to own, or we would have to contract with a farmer to use. And there are guidelines and restrictions on what type of crop ground you can put this on. And right now, we don't have to worry about that. He hauls it away. He takes care of it. At the end of the year, we do this five oh three report with KDHE that, that basically includes the swell samples that he does throughout the year, and he has a third-party lab do those. And then it, just how much tonnage we put on, what acres and where.
And each application segregated into strips and identified and tracked?
Correct, absolutely.
You're, you're not able to just use that soil right away?
Yeah, not right over and over again, so it would, it'd take quite a bit of property. For us to apply it, I don't think it'd be financially feasible for us to do a self-application.
True.
But between the farm ground, the hardware, the equipment, and then, and man-hours, it's one of those things, but it wouldn't be as easy.
So all things considered, that's a fair deal?
It's, it's a fair deal, yes. If it wasn't a fair deal, I wouldn't have come to the council and asked to do it. I would, I would look for what I consider a fair deal or negotiated it down with, with Agro Environmental.
Well, it seems like most surveys going up ten percent a year.
Unfortunately, it is, and as I said, we, we've been getting a real good deal. We raised it from two thousand to twenty-five-hundred in mid-two thousand and twenty. And even then, I thought that increase was a, was a really good deal. It's really what, I can go back to the options, but it's really what option council would like to choose.
So what are the wishes of the council?
I can move up if you want more detail on them.
I don't know, my, I mean, my sense would be that, you know, if we get to three years, maybe there's another provider that starts offering, if he's getting that kind of money for it.
We, we can always keep looking if we want to do it three year, whether in that time, if anybody else makes an offer. We normally have to seek them out. The, the other companies that do it are mostly out of state. That's why they want us to store it. That's a, that's a tough one there because.
Yeah.
The whole years with the sludge, that's a pretty big pile.
Sure.
And my concern with the years with the sludge being stored out there, one of my concerns is we've got global relief right across the fence, and that probably would create an over, not, not huge, but enough.
You don't want to do that business, no, at all.
So that's not something I would want to start, is having another float over to that residential neighborhood.
Right. But what's the benefit in going to five years compared to one, I guess? Because it's not any cheaper, really.
It's, it's.
Still sixty-nine thousand a year.
It really is, and then we'll go.
You're risking tapping your costs on the back end.
Exactly.
With a price increase between year three and year five.
And that's pretty much, I guess.
My guess is we're gonna see, if we do the three-year, by the time we get to that fourth and fifth year, whenever we get quoted, it's gonna be at least as high as what they're offering for the fourth and fifth year of that contract.
I, I agree with that.
I mean, if we, if we more than doubled since two thousand and twenty, I mean, that's two years. I don't know what three years is gonna look like. I hope it's not doubling again. At that point, perhaps we should start thinking about some other.
You know, and one thing to think about too is, is how crop price is relative to, well, this job actually is a driver because he's essentially taking, you know, agri-bull cropland that could have beans or wheat on it, or corn, whatever, and essentially putting it into containment for a three-year window that he's not able to grow, to generate any sort of crop yield on.
Yeah, no, no crop for human consumption.
So if he's looking at his, his operating spreadsheet for, you know, his input costs and what his yields are, and then where this is at, I suspect that a portion of this is input costs with respect to fuel, but also it's, even though crops are on, on a, you know, are kind of coming down right now, they're still up relative to where they were because, you know, it wasn't that long ago that corn was in the three-dollar range and it's, yeah, so, you know, I think that you'll see, you know, even if beans get back down to eight, then, then at that point, we would have wished that we had taken the shorter term, most likely, because those prices may be coming down, but.
And, and when, when we get to towards the end of this, as the city grows and the plant grows, we may outgrow a current belt press. Belt presses are expensive. At that point, we may choose to go to a liquid sludge and store liquid sludge, which will offer some other options as well. We only know, we can, we, we don't know for sure with that now. Right now, our plant is running well. It's not overloaded. We got quite a few more years with it. What we're starting to find now, I mean, even with regular maintenance done, every item at that plant's the same age, and so we're starting to see the same kind of wear on everything. For instance, I will be coming back to council in the next probably month with another, I am for another glow or block rebuild. It's, it's one of those things that when everything's the same age and everything's run the same amount of hours, unfortunately, everything starts to wear at the same time. And I'm sorry, Matt, I didn't mention that to you because I haven't got the quote back, but it was just one of those, one of those issues.
So do we want to lock it in for five years so that it don't get out of control? Or do we want to lock it in for three?
My recommendation is to at least lock it in for three. Three years saves money every year versus the one year at a time option. That's assuming we get that same price next year.
Any motion? Want to go a little bit and start spreading it?
I don't know, my gut, my guts.
There's one versus two.
Yeah.
There are things I want to change for years and show.
What? And there's no other, there's no other contractor that can do this?
There are other contractors, none of them are local, so they have the storage requirements that it's difficult for us to meet.
I mean, I guess if there's no other contract, I mean, we don't really have an option.
He's got a monopoly in the area.
He kind of really does in the area. Everybody's coming from Iowa, otherwise.
The six percent increase over the, you know, I guess that's, I mean, really doesn't sound like we have any other options. What's the, what's the, what happens here in two years if we want to go to the liquid sludge?
We could switch up, the contract, I mean, we both have outs in the contract.
Okay.
So it's not like we're bound or they're bound forever to do, but we could switch. And I don't think we'd have to go that, that soon if we did, and that's, that is just thinking out loud, for lack of a better term, if, when the plant grows and the city grows, if we've got to add something, that might be where I'll go. Now, he will do liquid too, but he charges a different rate on that, of course. It's per gallon. So. This is A, and there's B and C.
I don't, I don't see that there's an out in here if we change.
Okay, there's not one?
Mm-mm.
Okay, see, from the lawyer then, okay.
There's not an early termination.
I mean, financially, it makes sense to lock it in as long as you can, but I don't know. From a legal standpoint, I'm always a little bit leery of entering into long-term contracts.
That's my, yeah, I mean.
I mean, three, my personal opinion is three kind of balances, the risk and the financial benefit. If you get some of the benefit, you don't, you may not get as much financial benefit as you would under the five-year contract, but it also provides an opportunity to revisit it, or if we find a different vendor in the meantime, if we decide to switch over to a different, to the liquid sludge or whatever, you've got a little bit more flexibility.
Is the liquid sludge, I'm pretty ignorant to all this, so excuse me, is it cheaper? Is it more efficient? Is it, I mean, what's the difference?
I don't think it's, it's cheaper or more efficient. I think it's just how you designed your plant initially and how you want to store and haul your sludge. Now, now, belt presses get very expensive, and that's why in the future, if we're growing enough and, and we need a bigger belt press to cut, to produce the amount of cake that we need, that, to keep our plant light, would be an option to go to sludge, because some of those bigger presses require a larger building, they require a whole different power setup and everything, and at that point, it might be more financially feasible to go to sludge. Or to go to liquid, but excuse me.
With liquid, you're gonna have to have storage tanks, aren't you?
Yes, very large storage tanks, so, which wouldn't be, wouldn't create the odor like we would get storing a year's worth of cake.
So when I take the five-year total and divide it by average the five years, and the three-year total and average the three years, we do the three-year. Overall, we're paying twenty-one dollars and sixty cents more per month than if we do the five-year.
Interesting, okay.
So I think between the longevity, what we have, giving us time to look and see where we want to go in the future, to me, the three-year seems like the best option all around because it's not costing us that much more, and then you've got some time to figure out if we're gonna stay here or look elsewhere or do something else.
And we, we don't really know what the environmental rates are gonna be five years down the road. They're changing pretty quickly now too.
And then it doesn't lock us in for that extra two years.
Well, it sounds like, I don't know what Michael's opinion is, but three years sounds more advisable, I guess. Michael?
I, I, I think three's good.
I'll make a motion to go with this three-year contract option.
Second.
Motion to a second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both?
We'll enter a three-year deal and thank the council.
Thank you. Honorable mayor and council. Starbond site, you can see, looking back to the east, the hotel, the water park is above with an auditorium on the concave roof. There's the health club, and that would be Grand Slam Way, and the Galleria is in the background there. Arbor Creek, this is looking south-southeast across twenty-third with Amelia Earhart there on the right-hand side, and a nice view, thank you Thatcher, of sidewalk that runs from the subdivision to the school. Better view. And you can see where it crosses there by the wood line and ties in just right at that second phase. Elk Ridge is essentially infilled. Global relief continues to have new housing starts in that final phase. There's a view of Rustic Creek looking back to the north-northwest. And then some upcoming agenda items. We'll have the IRB hearing and IRB cell. We'll potentially look at tentatively having the improvement petitions for Big Arm. We'll have the bid awards for Arbor Creek Second Trails End, the rezoning for Ben Healy property for Mr. Paul Kelsey, and we'll have traffic controller and cameras tentatively scheduled for next meeting, and that'll replace some failing control units there on one-ninety-ninth. Then we have the magnetometer that's failing on the turn lane. So when they came through and redid that, it's, yeah. So we're in the process right now, Brooks, working with Gates and Trans Systems to make sure that what we get now will work with what's going in on the R-cut, because what will happen is, is we'll have with that intelligent traffic system from one-ninety-ninth to one-sixty-seven, you'll have the propensity to hit all greens or only one red through that duration if you're driving the speed limit. Now, if you're going seventy, you're gonna be hitting red lights, most likely, but it's sequenced so that you should have a more smoother flow. And then we'll have a growth discussion, and in two thousand and twenty-three, one note, January, because of municipal holidays falling on Mondays, we'll have two Tuesday meetings in January, which will be January third and January seventeenth. And then we'll have some administrative items to address, as well as the two thousand and twenty-two year-end report at the January seventeenth meeting, and, and some goal-setting sessions that will help set the priorities for the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four capital improvement program that then will roll into our operating budget. And that concludes my report. If there are no questions of myself or city staff at this time. Thank you.
I'm just afraid to, to ask about the water.
What would you like to know about water, Mayor?
Were we in a crisis on any of the wells?
No, we're not in a crisis on any of the wells. There was a water summit Friday in McPherson, put on by K and Mew, and we got a lot of information that, that does, isn't favorable for us and not a lot favorable for a lot of municipalities. They use the word, the water situation in Kansas is bleak. There are no new water rights available out there. The laws were written in the nineteen forties, and they favor ag. Municipality gets one vote, each farmer gets one vote, so we're very much outvoted. They don't, they don't expect the offers to refill, so as they receive, they won't want to come back. These are just tough things that I was concerned about that have been, that were told to us Friday. We still have our application into Department of Ag to re-perfect wells Form Five. I have not heard anything from them. I anticipate they're waiting to see how much we pump this year to see if we actually really need it, and we ran those wells right to the cusp on purpose, because we want, we need that water, and we want them to know we need that water.
And we're over two-hundred-and-seventy million gallons pumped.
Yes, two-hundred-and-seventy million gallons pumped, and so we're pumping quite a bit of water, and we need more than, right now, we've got fifty-four-point-nine-eight million for each well four and five. That's not enough. We can pump that out of those two wells and run full-time in six to eight months, and then we have to shut them off. So it gives us a, a good portion of the year that we can't run those under our current preparation. Hopefully, we can get that reopened. I had it on my list this week regardless of what happened last week, to call Elizabeth Fitch and I had to discuss our application and moving forward, so I intend to do that. Spoke with city engineer Harlan for her today, and he's going to speak with her also, so we're gonna kind of team up and, and not push them, but ask them nicely and politely from multiple places. But our water structure as we have it is, is doing well. It's, everything's running properly, but we need a, have there a more proportion on wells Form Five. That's the truth. And I know I was discussing this with Brian and, and. And I know I was discussing this with Brian and, and Mike on a little bit. We, is, there's a possibility as we grow in the near future, we'll need more storage. Meaning either a half a million or a million grounds of, of storage, additional storage. That will help us some with our wells. If we can store more on the down, on the low-use side, our wells don't run so hard. On the high-use side, we can continue to provide water. One of the things KMU said, Kingsbury and some utilities say that is probably gonna come to, and I'm, I'm not advocating this, I'm saying we should do this, but they're saying it's probably gonna come in the future to some cities' water restrictions, use restrictions. So, that's not something I'm advocating, or I'm just saying that's what they, that's what they mentioned.
So, the city Wichita only gets one vote?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Same way, like, for our groundwater system, we get, the municipalities get one vote.
One vote.
There, where like for the family farm, you got it subdivided into three different LLCs, you got three votes.
That's right, as long as they all have water rights on each LLC. And the interesting thing was, they stated that there was going to be, in Topeka there, there was maybe going to be a water committee in the Senate this year, but the House, they didn't know that there was gonna be one to discuss this. Ag's taking a lot of water. They've got an interesting thing with the ag where they can have a primary well and they can have a secondary well. And if they over-pump their secondaries, it, it impacts their primary. But nobody will tell, everybody over pumps their secondaries, but nobody will tell on anybody because everyone's over, over pumping. So, we're behind eight balls of municipality here in Kansas, right, in what the way the rules set. But it's something we're gonna have to be aware of as we grow and we're gonna have to plan for. And we'll know more when we find out if our application's been approved for, to pump more on the four and five. Now, my concern about four and five, and this isn't hitting us yet, is we're on the very west end of the Okaloa aquifer there. And if what they're saying is true, that these aquifers will recede and are not gonna return, with us being on the very west end of that, that recedes from us, and we can't pump, we can't pump. But we're not, we don't have that issue right now. But it's, anything's possible in the future. And I'm not talking two years or five years for that. That might be a 10-year problem at that point. But we need to be able to pump more water.
Right now, from what you've seen over the past few years, have we gone down any in our level on the wells?
No, we're still, our drawdowns are still pretty strong. We're not having an issue with the drawdowns. That's why I'm not so concerned about our aquifer levels going away anytime soon. And we're still pulling our production that we're able to pull from them by our, by our license. And so, and if we were to run them 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and we had enough, enough water rights to do that on four and five, we could do that. I mean, at that point, you're gonna have, it's harder on your equipment, of course, but that's something you cost if you get there.
And the draw elevations tested, Brooks has them tested weekly, so we know.
Yeah, we, we.
Where our depths at, especially in the summertime. We watch that draw.
So, we're watching it close, but this is something that was brought up since you asked. But what Harlan and I are working on, we're putting some more numbers to give you kind of a, a range over the last several years, how much our pumping's increased, when it's increased. And so, give you some, some hard numbers on that. That's kind of where.
So, the cities don't have priority over ag, don't they?
It was, the laws were written in the 40s and, and ag was, was big. They wanted people to, you know, succeed with their firms, so they gave them lots of equal powers of municipality. They state municipalities are kind of at the bottom of the total bowl, unfortunately. It's the way the rules are set. Yeah, I, I suppose in 1940, 75% of the legislators were farmers.
You have to remember.
Yep.
Mechanical tractors in Kansas, well, in the United States, only surpassed horses in the 50s, the 1950s.
Interesting.
For primary implement use. So.
With water.
Just to kind of set the timeframe there, sorry.
Yeah.
With water being presumably more valuable in the future, have we looked into more of an agreement with the rural water districts? Because I assume that they will want more out of their rights. We have more development going on.
Well, in the past, the, anytime we've talked to them, I think that they've wanted us to buy them out, if anything. Isn't that the way it went, Brian? That they were, the way we talked to them, they wanted us to buy the whole thing?
Well, we have an agreement right now that's for consideration and I'll defer to Ryan as, as we're hoping to hear back from them. And, and Ryan's got some documents that we're presenting to them that you're already authorized in the hopes that with us presenting those signed documents, we can get some movement on what we thought was previously agreed to.
Yeah, I mean, we got the, the water agreement with regard to Kelsey's development. And then we've had conversations about having sort of a perpetual agreement so that in the future, to the extent that we need to acquire water rights in area, any area that's undeveloped, that we would have a set rate. We wouldn't have to renegotiate each time.
Well, what, yeah, like, what about all the stuff north, like, north of nature that is the Bowman stuff? Oh, that's, because that's in rural water district, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, what happens there?
At this point.
With Lang stuff.
Yeah, that, well, the Lang stuff is, is City of Wichita territory now, so. But with respect to that territory at this point, it's escaping me, but I don't believe we've been contacted by either rural water or the developer for that territory at this point.
They don't, they just don't want nothing?
What's that?
They just, like, for the Bowman ground, they just don't want nothing? They haven't contacted us?
For what? We'll notify them once, once that's aware, but at this point, we still haven't, we haven't got petitions or any, it's just platted.
I believe that.
And, and it's been in the city since, I want to say, 2010 or 2012.
The Bowman stuff?
Yes.
The developer, they're not, they're not that local. They've done some local work around here, but they're, they've done work in Texas as well. But they partner with Bothman, and I believe Bothman informed them about rural water districts right for water use. And so, I, I don't think they're ignorant of it. I just don't know if they've come to a private agreement because we haven't heard anything from that end. Generally, we've left it to the developer to negotiate, like we did with Shallowburg, to negotiate that development for water right acquisition. But I believe, like I said, I don't believe they're ignorant of it. I think, I think Bothman is informed of it. I just don't think they'd ask for any cost assistance that are part.
Well, not having, I mean, cost assistance, cost assistance or not, it would be nice to have an agreement with rural water district going forward with any development that's in the rural water district, just so we kind of know what, what's happening with them. But I don't know. I mean, because if water's gonna be so valuable, they could gouge us. I mean.
And those are the preliminary conversations that we've, we've had. And they have expressed general interest in doing an agreement like that. I think it becomes a question of, okay, well, what's the term of that agreement?
Right.
Is it gonna be something that is terminable at will on 30 days' notice by either side? Are we gonna lock in an agreement for a period of years? If so, how many years? Is it going to be renewable? You know, there are a lot of different variables that go into that. And I, I don't know that I have any answers right now in terms of what makes the most sense in that regard. You know, and, and, I mean, that, locking in that agreement only protects us. It's a hedge against future price increases.
Right.
It doesn't help us in any way with regard to sourcing, you know, an additional water source.
More water, right. It's just protecting us from getting gouged. Well, that's all I have.
Well, I guess we'll move on to Gary's body comments, Harry.
That was my comment.
Sarah?
I don't have anything.
Michael?
It was mighty fun to see over at the Christmas tree lighting last night. That all went very well and appreciate the chamber. We should see you tonight, but, and, and all the work, the city staff and police and even the fire department helped out with the parade. So, yeah, it was a really great time and you did great lighting the tree up.
Yeah, I had to have it out with Santa for all the times I got shafted as a kid, but. I guess that's water under the bridge, right?
Sure.
All right, I don't have anything, so I guess I would take the motion to adjourn.
Well, we've got a brief executive session.
I'll make a motion to recess into executive session related specifically to personal matters of non-elected personnel, KSA 75-4319B1, to include the city attorney, city administrator, and chief financial officer, who will reconvene the open meeting in the city council chamber after 10 minutes at 8:10 p.m.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Aye.
Aye.